Next on our agenda is introduction of citizens. Ms. Erickson, would you start first, please?
Faith Erickson. Brooke Janey.
Josh Walters.
Dorian Gray.
Justin Beal.
Susan Charles.
Timothy Schlatter.
Crystal Boland.
Charlie Barber.
Jennifer Holbrook.
Sarah Engler.
Mike Engler.
Diane Leidy.
Anne Preys.
Debbie Brand.
Sarah Fisher.
Mary Glaski.
Audrey Hunsden.
Claudia Knott.
Zion McNaul.
Terry Shear.
Al Caldwell.
Greg Rice.
Brett Carpenter.
Eva Carpenter.
John Clausen.
Ivaya Crossley.
Lexie Lerue.
Emily Dean.
Paul Thompson.
Jesse Hill.
Cheryl Prades. Please stand.
Thank you for coming this evening. Next on our agenda is comment from citizens. As a reminder, this is a East Noble Business Meeting. We act as an professional and business man. When your name is called, please get up and state your name, address, and the topic that you'd be commenting on this evening. As far as the meeting is limited to 20 minutes. We currently have 10 people signed up to speak, so we'll give each person two minutes per person. All statements are to be directed to the presiding officer. No one may address or question a board member individually. Respect what each other has to say, and please do not interrupt or comment during their allotted time. This is not a two-way conversation or open for debate. It's for your individual comments that the board will take under advisement. Please use the voting to address the board, which is in front. And if you have any materials to hand out that you'd like for the board to see afterwards, there is a letterbox up there, and please put them in the letterbox. First on the list is Anne Preys. Ms. Preys?
My name is Anne Preys. I live at 3635 Charger Court in Fort Wayne, Indiana. My last name was Fox when I graduated from East Noble in 1968. I'm here because public schools and teachers across the nation are being attacked. Their school boards have a responsibility to fully support the vision and mission of its schools and the teachers who are implementing curriculum to accomplish this. For most of my working years, I was a social studies teacher. I taught on Guam. I taught for the Department of Defense dependent schools in Germany. I taught for Carroll High School, and I even taught for East Noble at the ALC. I always felt lucky when I was teaching subjects such as psychology, sociology, and geography, as they lend themselves well to discussion. It is beautiful to watch teenagers respectfully question and debate in a safe classroom environment. A teacher's agenda is to help students develop higher-order thinking skills. We must encourage students to not be narrow-minded and ethnocentric. A qualified and responsible social studies teacher will help students examine stereotypes, prejudices, and discrimination. For instance, why would someone who is not prejudiced discriminate? Or why would someone who has prejudices not discriminate? Can prejudice be defined as being down on something you're not up on? All of these are valid questions. For me, Dr. King's dream is my dream. The golden rule is my rule. The Constitution is my law, but more importantly, it is the supreme law of the land. So in conclusion, a reminder, separation of church and state is required. Thank you to board members for unselfishly serving the community and for allowing and considering respectful, responsible citizen input.
Next up is Deb Donaldson Brand. Ms. Brand?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Brand of 807 Village Court here in Kendallville. I am very familiar with East Noble as I graduated in 1968, had two sons graduate and a grandson. Also, I worked for East Noble for 25 years as a teacher's assistant in elementary. I am here tonight just to express my support for the school board. I admire your commitment and your generosity as you work for the youth of our community, and I do mean for all of our youth. Again, thank you for your service.
Next on the list is Claudia Knott. Ms. Knott?
Thank you, board, for allowing me to speak during this citizens forum. I grew up in Kendallville. I graduated from East Noble in 1969. I'm a retired educator, having spent over 40 years in public school classrooms, high school, as well as on the university level. Recently, I noticed that the movement across the nation to seize control of local school boards, the extremist rights campaign to seize control of them, has arrived in my hometown, and that got me involved in this. It alarms me. And what I'm saying at this point, I'm sure you already know, but I need to say it because I want you to know that I know it, and I'm going to be bold enough to suggest that I speak for the majority of right-minded citizens of America when I say this. I did some research. The big picture of East Noble school board meetings, the trouble, the mockery of these meetings started June 23rd, 2021, which you already know that. I looked at 10 and a half years of East Noble school board meetings, and I found in the citizens' comments section, and this is what I found. Until June 23rd, 2021, not one citizen stood up here and quoted a Bible passage. Not one person lectured the board on the Constitution. Not one person delivered an address on family values. Nobody claimed that East Noble curriculum was indoctrinating students or contained pornography. No person stood up here and implied that teachers did not know their content areas. No person said we should deny services to a particular student population. Nobody stood up here and spoke disrespectfully of teachers and to the board, and nobody was removed from the meeting due to disorderly behavior. I know that you have endured that. And when I saw that that was happening here, this is not a tiny, it's a tiny teapot, but this is not a tiny tempest. This is happening all over the country, and people who do not want this for their local schools, their public schools, are standing up and saying so. So you have endured this right-wing blitz, and I sympathize with you for that, and I thank you for your dedicated service. I mean, who else wants to be on a school board? Probably nobody.
I want to say one more thing. Can I just say one more thing?
Oh, your time is up. I appreciate it.
Okay, their aim is to destroy democracy. That's what they're about. Public education is the center of the law.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Charlie Barber. Mr. Barber?
Was that really two minutes?
It was two minutes.
Charlie Barber, 336 Eos Street in Auburn. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. Well, I know Mrs. Blackman's aware of that. This week is PSAT week. Today, we ran our practice session, making sure students knew how to get on and knew the procedure, what type of questions there were going to be tomorrow is when the big test actually takes place. I would like to say, I'm assuming, board, you know this, that Dr. Kouris wrote a grant so that we could afford to be able to test freshmen as well as sophomores and juniors, which it's always been sophomores and juniors. And since we, I believe I'm correct, Dr. Kouris may have to correct me, that we're not going to be doing NWEA with the freshmen anymore because now we'll have to tattle for PSAT. Now, for those of you who took the PSAT when you were in high school, it's different because of the fact, especially now that it's computer-based. Depending on how a student answered one question, that can affect the type of, that can, I'm stumbling over my words. That can cause the next question should be set up differently or a different type of question, and so that's going to give better data on what the student's ability is, what the student's thinking process, and so forth. And that was part of the reason why not using NWEA as well. I do also want to give a shout out to Mr. Graham. He has organized everything at the high school. And if you've never worked with Mr. Graham, he is oh-so-organized. And I asked him today about how we felt it went. He was like, it went fairly well, but of course, Jim always has everything organized. So those of you who are freshmen, sophomore, and junior students, hopefully, you know, you can encourage them, especially if you see them tonight. Get a good night's sleep and eat breakfast, because we start tomorrow morning at 8:00 with the testing. So hopefully, it goes well for us.
Next on the list is Greg Rice. Mr. Rice?
Yes, Greg Rice. Fort Wayne, Indiana. Want to quickly cover some topics regarding board tactics. Before I do that, I, in time, want to thank Teresa Gramo for her apology last week for a misunderstanding we had. I do appreciate that, and I hope that's all water under the bridge. I think everybody who had a hand in putting that presentation together for the State of the Corporation address, phenomenal job on the presentation. I know it took a lot of work. Thank you for that. A couple of meetings ago, Mr. Pine made some statements that we vehemently disagree with that we know that were directed towards us, and we believe that were false. After that, a meeting later, Mr. Durbin reemphasized those, which then prompted us to object silently, which then Kendallville Police Department moved up to show that they were in our view as a force of intimidation, if you will. After that, we went to the meeting. Oh, no, 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 I get it on Brad. Then old Brad over there, he posted hideous, hideous accusations. Remember that, Brad? Online?
Sir, Mr. Rice, you're supposed to direct your comments to me.
Oh, okay, I'll look right at you. Your partner there leveled hideous accusations of our organization intimidating women. But I got to move on because I don't have enough time, even though I requested 15 minutes to address this with the board for a back-and-forth, something you did not offer us. And then last week, we were ordered to vacate the premises under some trespassing law because we were exercising our constitutional rights. So, we get it. We see the pattern. We see the pattern of abuse of power. And I would say to the previous speaker, I'm sorry it took us so long to get here. I wish we would have been involved prior to June 23rd, whenever the date was. My apologies for that, but we are here, and we are here to stay. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is John Clausen. Mr. Clausen?
Good evening. John Clausen, 1530 North Shore Drive, Rome City, Indiana. I'm just here to make a few comments primarily in thanks. So first of all, Greg stole a little bit of my thunder there, but I thought the State of the Corporation meeting went really well, and I liked the details that were presented. I like how they were presented. I thought the speakers were articulate. I liked the approach of the boards that you had around where we could leave sticky notes, and I appreciated the transparency and the action plans that you presented. So thank you for that. I also appreciated the board member who spent a few minutes up front speaking to us, explaining that there's a policy change or approach that I didn't realize. But just the fact that that person took the time to have a nice, friendly dialogue with us was extremely appreciated. I hope that that's something we can continue to do, and I deeply appreciate that. So if I understand correctly, and if I'm not doing this on purpose, if I misunderstood, you guys can correct me later, okay? But I understood that we're never going to be surprised again by brand-new policies. I understood that we're now going to be able to see even the policy drafts before you discuss them in a working session, that they're going to be in the board packet. And if that's true, I think that's an amazing step in the right direction, and I really appreciate that very much. So kudos to you on that. If I got that wrong, it's my fault. I couldn't get to my email tonight to make sure I got that right. Finally, I do want to encourage a couple things. Number one, the transgender policy that you passed a couple of months ago, which did not have the transparency we desired, it still requires significant improvement. I would respectfully ask that you consider those improvements. We're not talking about legal improvements. We're talking about process improvements and doing the right thing. Also, I plead with you not to sexualize our kids, breed racism in the curriculum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Brett Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter?
My name is Brett Carpenter. What is being argued over in the most simple terms is who gets to decide the religious and moral upbringing of the students? The parents or the school? Do the parents decide what ideology, what morals, what religion their children are being indoctrinated with? Or do the schools, the teachers, decide what morals, what ideology, and what religion the students are being indoctrinated with? Six out of seven in the school board think they know what is best for everyone, and so they insist on putting sexually graphic literature into the curriculum, even for children whose parents are against it. That happened to my daughter. I, on the other hand, don't believe that a small group of people in the school board should make the decision for everyone. I believe that parents know what is best for their children, and they should decide at what age and what sexual material they should expose their children to. Schools should focus on academics. I saw the graph on school attendance, and there's already been, there's been a steady decline in the number of students attending East Noble. The latest was a net loss of 275 students. How many more are going to leave because of the decisions by the board? I've asked dozens of people why they have left, and it's always the same answer, because of the indoctrination and sexualization in the schools. Some did say it was because you allowed the superintendent to run off Andrew Deming. My question is, is this how you pay back your community? Are you really willing to wreck the school system and ruin your city because you're so intent on corrupting children sexually? Instead of us being able to promote Kendallville as a safe place for students where there won't be sexualized and where the focus will be on academic achievement, which would cause an influx of family and students and benefit the entire city, you're going to continue down the same destructive path? Wake up! I see where all the people are going, and I see why they're leaving, and I talk to the people. It's because of the indoctrination and sexualization in school curriculum.
Yes, it is.
Next on the list is Tim Schlatter. Mr. Schlatter?
My name's Tim Schlatter. I live at 242 South Park Avenue. I'm here to talk about our Constitution and our laws. First, our Constitution does not reference any God. If you read, our founding fathers talk about how this country was not founded on Christianity. In the Treaty of Tripoli, then-President John Adams said, "The government of the United States is in no sense founded on the Christian religion." He and the other founders saw how religion always leads to violence when it is in charge. Second, our laws are not based on the Bible or religious morality. It is based on English common law. That is why we fine people rather than cutting off hands or taking eyes or stoning them. These are facts, and no, your opinions don't count. I have listened to a very local group, very vocal group, talk about the unconstitutional way this board acts, yet no proof. I have heard professor personal attacks against the board and its president, that he should be locked up. And then they get upset that their freedom of speech is being taken away. Threats and personal attacks are not protected speech. People who speak at a school function should know it is a privilege and subject to school regulation. The latest row is about public property. Yes, the school is public, but it is also a corporation, and as such, can treat its property as private and subject to regulations. The bottom line is, you are not giving criticism. You are harassing and troubling this board. It needs to stop. Thank you.
Next up is Josh Walters. Mr. Walters?
Josh Walters, Kendallville, Indiana. I'm here to clear up some facts for those that haven't been coming to board meetings for several years as I have been. Come for several years, stay apprised of what's going on in the district, to hear the concerns of citizens and get up here and speak. Oftentimes, as you guys know, there was nobody ever signed up to speak, or people that did stand up here talked about the good things going on at East Noble. Very few people would stand up here and address an issue that they actually had at East Noble. They apparently got cleared up pretty quickly by doing the right thing and talking to the right people, because those people were here for one meeting, maybe two, and then never came back. As you guys may or may not know, I've been coming to the last couple meetings because I got tired of people coming up here and just talking about how awful East Noble is and how bad everything is run here, how the school board didn't do what was right for children, and how our teachers were out to guide students down the wrong path. I've worked here for 24 years. I started here in second grade elementary, and I can tell you that's the farthest thing from the truth that there is. East Noble is a great place to be. If it wasn't, I wouldn't continue to be working here. So I came back here just to kind of clear up some things. I watched the last two meetings on YouTube. They were posted on there. Saw the public comment portion of that where people were attacking Dave Pine and Brent Durbin about their comments they were making about the name-calling that had happened. And I can tell you that I was sitting in these meetings when a member of the audience out here stood up here, pointed at every board member by name and called him a racist. I was here. You won't find that video on YouTube because they select what videos they post on their YouTube channel. But it was, it happened. I was here. They won't post that video. For those of you that weren't here prior to, a year ago, it did happen prior to that.
Find the video. I'll post it.
So just last week, I'm running out of time, but I got kind of the similar encounter. It wasn't as extreme as you guys get. I was outside with Mr. Leach when they refused to listen to the police and leave the thing. I understand there's some arguments about what the law is, but I'll finish up with that on the next meeting. Thank you.
Next on the list is Zion McNaul. Mr. McNaul?
Well, Mr. President, I wanted to take a moment to thank you for another opportunity to speak with you today. I also wanted to thank Dr. Gramo, the Assistant Superintendent, and the CFOO for the great presentation at the State of the Corporation address. I also kind of wanted to share that I had the opportunity to volunteer for the band, their booth at the Apple Festival. That was something that I really enjoyed. It was an opportunity that was brought to my attention by one of the band parents who said that they needed help. Really great kids. I had a great time participating with all of the staff, the parents, and then, of course, the students themselves who volunteered. I just want to start this by saying that everyone in this board is acting in good faith. I don't think any of you have ulterior motives. I think, oh, sorry, any of the board members have ulterior motives. There are, of course, concerns about the constitutional implications with regards to a group of protesters that were at the school corporation. I do think that we all have a civic duty, especially for those like myself that identify as a liberal and who are with the Constitution and always diligently study to make sure that everyone is acting within their rights. Perhaps the board would be well-advised to consult with its attorney to kind of have like a policy for how situations like that that occurred at the State of the Corporation address are handled, just to kind of have a legal framework. Public property versus private property. The corporation owns a public property. The question is whether or not the protesters were using a public space. And while this is going to be rare, all of you know that I'm very outspoken in favor of LGBTQIA rights. I do think that there is a good argument to be made that by virtue of the fact that it was a public event, the area in front of the school corporation building was a public space, protected under the First Amendment of the Constitution. I do just want to finish up by thanking everyone. I understand that the job you guys have is not easy. Do what you think is best for the students.
That concludes the comments from citizens this evening. So we'll move on to our next agenda item. Board members, you had a chance to review the minutes of the September 20th, 2023 meeting. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
So we have a motion for Mrs. Blackman to accept the minutes as presented, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries. The board, also in your packet was claims as of October 18th, 2023. Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve the claims as presented by Mr. Trulove, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries. That brings us to personnel items. Let's see, we got resignations. We don't have any retirements or terminations. Any, any motion? Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept the resignations and terminations presented by Dr. Jansen, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries. Reassignments. You have a chance to review those. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the reassignments as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Trulove to accept the reassignments as presented, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries. New hires. We have less than new hires. You have a chance to review in the earlier packet. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve new hires by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries. We do have one additional new hire. You have a chance to review that.
I'll make a motion to accept the additional new hire as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the additional hire by Dr. Jansen, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries. And then leave request. You have a chance to review the leave request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the leave request by Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Mr. Trulove. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us down to our instructional part. Dr. Gramo?
Yeah, we're very excited. I'm bored, I don't know if you remember, but there was a request from a few of you to learn more about our FFA program. And Mr. Kendall is here this evening. It looks like he brought some friends with him. So please go ahead and introduce the presentation. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you. Believe it or not, I'm not presenting these four over here, so.
Yep, so thank you, guys, for having us out here tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity for us to give you, you know, what the FFA does for us on a daily basis and throughout here, and then for us throughout high school. So once again, thank you, guys, for having us out. And I'm going to, oh, before I do that, I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Paul Thompson. I'm your FFA chapter president. This is Ivaya Crossley, my vice president, Emily Dean, my secretary, and then Lexie Lerue, my treasurer. So now I'm going to pass it on to Emily Dean to talk about agriculture education.
Okay, so the three main parts of agriculture education is the time in the classroom. In the, in the high school, we have very, are, very different classes from horticulture to animal science to ag fabrication. The second thing we need is FFA, which involves from contests, conventions, and community service. The third thing we need is supervised ag experience, which is a project outside of school that can vary from cattle, or working cattle, growing a garden, or even working in the ag business. FFA mission statement. FFA makes a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for career leadership. This can be anything from going to different leadership events to even running for an officer position. Personal growth, I know FFA's helped me a lot with just getting out of my comfort zone, talking to new people, trying different things. And career success, there's just so many opportunities to develop skills that can help you later on in life through agricultural education.
Can you open it?
I got it.
Okay, she's got it.
FFA history. In 1928, FFA was created. In 1950, they made FFA a federal chapter. A federal chapter means that they let us teach FFA in classrooms. In 1965, they created our East Noble FFA chapter. In 1966, New Farmers of America formed as FFA. New Farmers of America was the African-American FFA corporation. In 1969 is when they founded like a 1,000. In 1988 is when they changed their name to the National FFA Organization. They changed it because of the diversity of agricultural industries. And then this year, in 2023, we created a middle school chapter. We created this chapter for kids that are younger than us to experience what we experience in FFA. And when they get into high school, be able to come up to the to come up to the levels we are and be able to be comfortable being leaders like us.
FFA and agriculture facts. Today, there are over 946,000 FFA members and 9,200 chapters in grades five through 12. Chapters are located in all 50 states, including Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. 69% of members live in rural areas, 10% living in urban districts, and 20% in small towns. FFA is not just for farmers. It doesn't matter what background you come from, where you live. We just want people that are going to participate and have a good time. FFA chapters are in 1620 large cities in the United States, and agriculture is the nation's number one employer with more than 20% of the United States workforce.
So what we do, so the FFA, you know, they strike big in career development. I think the FFA and their career development is the one thing that sets it apart from a lot of the other activities, whether that's sports or any other clubs that you see within the school. Because not only do we focus on, you know, being leaders and working with other people, but we focus on then, you know, career options that are for in the future. Unlike, you know, sometimes sports, you do it for the joy of it, and you know, it might lead you to a career. But the thing about FFA is there's so many options that you can then sit down and learn about and pick apart on what you like. And then with that, you know, you get some information, and then you're able to take that information and put it into a contest, a district contest that's in the spring every year. That's held around our district in northeast India. It's a lot of fun. You know, you get to make presentations like this and present it to people and competing against other people. So, you know, that's kind of the career development side of things. You know, there's anything from animal science to plant science to essays to speaking like we're doing here tonight. And then with that, you know, it leads you into new things that you didn't expect you were going to be doing. For example, for me, I'm in the forestry contest, which is listed up here. And if you would have told me a year ago that I'm going to do a forestry contest where I'm going to be identifying leaves and looking at wood and seeds and diseases, I would have said you're crazy. I was like, I was, when I first heard that, I'm like, no way, that sounds boring. And, you know, it's been one of those things. It's, I've really enjoyed. I got to meet my team members with it then too more, and it was just a good time. So there's the career development side of things.
Okay, supervised ag agriculture experience is a project outside of the classroom which involves many different things. And it applies your agricultural knowledge and skills into like real life situations. There are two types, placements, placement, which is in an employee setting, which can be paid or unpaid, and then entrepreneurship, which is in a, owning your own business or managing your own business, being for a profit.
Community service. So this is something that we're always trying to hit on as much as we can, as often as we can. So the first thing that we do to normally start the year out, you've probably seen us pulling trash cans around at the Apple Festival. So we walk around Apple Festival and help pick up trash around there. And then we are then emptying the trash cans. The next thing with that is we do help clean up the fairgrounds. So a few times before County Fair, we go into the fairgrounds, help pick up trash, help pick up sticks, that type of stuff. And the Christmas families, that's one of our favorite ones is because that's our chance for us to help people that are in need. So we're able to donate some money, some food, and then some gifts to a family that can't quite afford to have a Christmas that year. And then the teacher breakfast. So with that, every year during FFA week, we make some pancakes, some bacon, some eggs for the teachers. They really enjoy it. And then they're able to take that breakfast and go into their teacher meetings on Monday morning and just start their week out with a bang. And the last thing is pork producers. Pork producers helps us, sponsors us then too. So, you know, we're able to help keep everything, keep their facility clean. We work, sell pork burgers at the county fair. And so there's our, our community service projects that we do right now. We're always looking to add more and see what else we can help do. And yeah, that's our community service.
Traveling opportunities. As, as FFA members, we are, we are able to travel all around the United States. Some examples are contests. Some contests are like judging. If you're really good at judging, you can travel anywhere you want in the United States to judge different animals. State and national convention are big ones. National convention is where you can meet people all around the United States. It's really fun. And there's colleges everywhere that are like ag based. And so it's not all, it's also a charter opportunity, but it's also a college opportunity. So you can see what colleges offer and if you're interested. There's also leadership camps and some, the biggest one is the Leadership Camp in Washington.
How we finance. We don't get any funding from the school or any other big organization. So all the money that we make, we get from doing our fundraisers. Some of the fundraisers we do are corporate sales, fruit and meat sales, strawberry sales. And our goal with our fundraisers is not only to be able to go to conventions and go to conferences and do different events within the chapter and district. Our goal is to keep every opportunity for our members cost as low as possible and make sure that everybody can get the most out of their FFA experience.
What we do, we have district meetings, chapter meetings. We go to chapter events, which we do our fundraising events. And then community service, we have out at the fairgrounds and many other places. And then competitions, there's so many different competitions. And succeed and have fun.
We'd like to thank you all for letting us refer back to you guys and showing us how much FFA means to all of us. Thank you.
And if there's any questions, you're welcome.
I know these two are, are sophomores. What are the two of you?
What about you?
What about you?
Okay, so you're going to continue to carry on and then develop on the middle school.
When you guys do your fundraisers, do you send out like a statewide email letting?
Yes.
I feel like I.
It just depends. We have, we go through the proper channels, make sure everything's approved before we send any email out to other schools, you know, throughout the school corporation, stuff like that. So we do, we do what we can. And like I said, our goal is to keep everything as cheap as possible for our kids. Like, we will be leaving for national convention, first week of November. It, they moved it back a week, so we had to, we're not going down as long because we have finals that naturally is next week. So we're not going down as long. But for the most part, these guys will pay nothing to go for that trip. And they'll do leadership camp, not camps, classes and things actually taught by national officers, big industry leaders, like the CEO from Dow will be doing one, things like that. They'll go through. There's probably 300, 400 ag-based colleges there that will be getting information from because they, actually, these two will be, next year will be leaving, you know, after their senior year and stuff like that. So we do a lot of different things of that nature. We're going, it's year round. It's not, you know, one season like a lot of people think, like, you know, we start, it's summer to summer. Like, we go all year round. And these guys bust their butt and they put up with me a lot, so.
How many members do we have, both in the high school and the middle school?
So right now, between the two, there's roughly 50 to 60. The middle school, and I will say this, I love the high school, I love our kids, but things are down in everything. Like, numbers of participation is down, not just in FFA, across the board. We started the middle school and we had, it's a big bang down there. Like, it, it's big, and we have a lot of kids that are really into it right now, that I think we're going to have a very bright future. Our numbers kind of hurt a little bit because we did not have a middle school presence. And so, you know, a lot of people, when they come into high school, they already kind of got their path going. And so that hurt us a little bit. Now we have a really good start down there, and I hope just to continue to grow. And they're all pumped up. They're all ready to go. They're going to be doing contests this year and stuff like that with us, so.
Any other questions, please? Well, thank you so much, Mr. Kimmel. Okay, next on our agenda is business items. Dr. Grumow, action to approve contract? Gotcha.
All right, board. In your packet, you would have received a copy of a two-year master contract for certified teachers. As we've discussed and shared prior to, some work started over the summer in June, carried in July, and then starting on September 15th, we held our first public hearing to take input on what would go into the contract. An official negotiation started between East Noble Administration and the East Noble Education Association on September 15th. Because of the work that was put in over the summer, we were able to come to some agreements fairly quickly. And on September 20th, we had another public hearing to discuss what was put into the, the contract. And then East Noble Education Association then ratified the contract on October 10th, 2023. So in your packet, I present to you a new master contract ratified by East Noble Education Association for your approval tonight to become a new contract for starting January 1, I'm sorry, July 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to approve the contract as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Blackman to approve the contract as presented, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Motion carries.
Thank you, board. And thank you to East Noble Education Association for the work that we put in to come to such an agreement. The next item on the list, actually, is a laundry list of resolutions to adopt the 2024 budget as presented in the prior public hearing. In your packet, the first item would be the Form 4, which lists the four funds that were budgeted, the dollar amounts that were presented in the public hearing. And so I, as presented, would ask that you approve the 2024 budget as presented. And then we will send it off to the DLGF for their approval and hopefully get something back prior to January 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution for the, adopt the budget by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Motion carries.
Next item, board, is in reference to both the bus replacement plan and the capital projects plan that were also discussed in the public hearing, as well advertised online and through the Gateway website. So as presented, I would ask that you approve and adopt the bus replacement plan as well as capital projects plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as written and presented to us.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve the bus replacement plan and capital projects plan by Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Mr. Trulove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Motion carries.
The next resolution is a resolutions to reduce the budget appropriation in calendar year 2024. This resolution is customary, as is reviewed by the DLGF and the information sent back to us. There may be a need to reduce the appropriation. So this resolution provides myself, as well as Dr. Grumow, the opportunity to make those reductions as necessary to then some resubmit to the DLGF for approval. Again, this is only reductions, this will not, this are capable to increase the budget that has been presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Give permission to Brian and Dr. Grumow, who would give the budget.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Blackman to give permission to authorize budget reductions, seconded by Dr. Jansen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Motion carries.
And the last resolution is a resolution to transfer dollars from the education fund to the operations fund. This, this was something that was put into play back in 2019 when the funds were changed from the general fund to the education operations fund. The state and DLGF allowed a transfer of up to 15% of your education fund revenue to the operations fund to support expenses that prior to were in the general fund that were excluded and now put into the operations fund. So in the past, we have come nowhere near the 15%. Last year, or actually this current year, we transferred 800,000. By putting the budget together for 2024, I'll be able to reduce that. We only transferred $200,000 from the education fund to the operations fund. So again, in your board packet, a resolution to transfer as needed in 2024, up to $200,000 from the education fund, the operations fund as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the transfer fund by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Motion carries.
Thank you, board. The last item I have on your business is action to deem items obsolete. You received a packet in your email with some items that we asked that you deem obsolete so that we can, you know, sell or dispose of in the most cost-effective manner on eBay.
I'll make a motion to accept eBay items as written.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve the sale of the obsolete items on eBay by Dr. Jansen, submitted by Mr. Trulove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Motion carries. Discussion items, there is none listed for this evening? Okay. So that brings us to late items. Is there any late items?
We do not have any late items.
Late items. Moving along. Comments from the superintendent, Dr. Grumow?
We have a few here. Very first one is, this past Saturday, we lost a student. And we want to acknowledge that and extend our, our thoughts to the family as they go through this really tough time. I'm sure it's very difficult on all of them, and our, our staff and our students have really felt this deeply. So we're just here to support in any way that we can. We just want to extend that to, to anyone that's hurting. We do have counselors available, and they have been available this week. So, you know, thoughts are with the families, so. Also, I just want to thank the presenters tonight. Half of, most of them left. Good job. You can extend them.
Hey, they got, they got the SAT test tomorrow, so.
Well, we're very excited about what, where the program's going. So thank you. Appreciate that. Also, just want to share again, we did do the State of the Corporation address last Wednesday, and we are going to be having town hall meetings where we are seeking public input. So October 23rd at Avila at 6 o'clock, October 25th at Rome City at 5 o'clock, and October 30th at the middle school at 6:30. And we varied those times because everybody has a different schedule, and we want you to have an opportunity to come. So please come. We are really looking for some input on our profile of graduate, our turn to remember all of a strategic plan, and then also our STEAM initiative that we're, we're working on. Also, I want to congratulate our band, who's making it to semi-state. Very excited for them. It's been a while since they made it, so good luck to them. Also congratulate Nick David, our athletic director. This is the first meeting that we've had since he got his honor as, and I'm going to read this because I will mess it up, District 2 Indiana Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association High School Athletic Director of the Year. Anyways, kudos to him. Congratulations. We're very proud of him. I just want to address one of the comments that came up tonight about board policies. Yes, they will be in the board packet since we've been, you know, posting board packets ahead of time. There will be first reading, second reading in those packets.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Grumow. Next is comments or questions from the board. Board members, any questions or comments?
I did.
Yes, Mr. Pine?
About five weeks ago, a former student of mine, who's now a junior at the high school and is on the football team, reached out to me, knowing that I'm involved outside of school and other things with Honor Flight in northeastern Indiana. And he wanted to know what he and his football teammates could do to honor those veterans that have served. So Stephen Smith took it upon himself, and as a result, last Wednesday, 86 veterans, each received a very nice letter from members of the East Noble football team, thanking them for their service.
Any other questions or comments, board? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. The board will meet an executive session immediately following for Indiana so to discuss job performance evaluations of individual employees. The next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, November 15th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. at Southside Elementary. Elementary. At the conclusion of this meeting, the lights will be shut off and deputies will be asked to clear the building. With that, this meeting is adjourned.